We'd like to welcome everyone to our January 24th, 2019 City Commission Meeting. The invocation will be led by the Reverend Kenny Johnson, Executive Director of Rhodey Bush Boys Ranch. Is Mr. Johnson here? Not seeing Mr. Johnson. Mr. Suggs, would you come up in his stead? Thank you, sir. Would you lead us in the invocation in the place?
Sure, I will. Please show me in prayer, please, bow our heads. Dear most gracious and heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight to do business here in the city of Palatka and also to honor these young men and women for their hard works and efforts that they put forth in their community and their schools. And we ask that if it be thy will that you will lead us in conversation light, that we'll be able to do the work that is pleasing to you, this community, and for all our citizens. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please show me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Suggs. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the December 10th and January 7th special meeting and also the January 10th regular meeting?
Motion on the floor, second.
Is motion on the floor in seconds? Any of you ready?
Of course.
All in favor, say aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. And we have a call.
Sorry? Except for only previous meeting.
Moving on to item number one of the agenda, which is our public recognition and presentations. We're going to pass on both of our proclamations for this meeting and we're going to move into our item C, which is recognition of the 95th of Black and 95th Form of Government Anniversary. Alan Rosen from FCCMA, please come forward this time.
I'm Alan Rosen. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Port Orange, Florida. And I'm also, I serve on the Public Management Matters Committee for the Florida City County Management Association. And I'm so thankful everybody came out tonight. This is me, I really appreciate that. So, but it is also, we can have a learning component to this too. So, I know for me, I was not really into local government until actually I went to graduate school. Didn't really know how it worked till then. And I know there's not a lot of learning and, you know, primary education about how we do what we do. So, we're going to see a video in a couple of minutes and we'll give you an idea of how this and many other cities across the country run. So, this should be quite interesting. So, as part of the committee, I am here this evening to recognize and celebrate with the city of Palatka for 95 years as a commission manager form of government. As you may well know, commission manager form of local government was created to help separate administrative oversight from direct political influence while providing elected officials with a high level of professional expertise to guide, support, and provide you with options for the decision and policymaking process. And in that vein, I'd like to highlight some of the city's most recent accomplishments. Palatka recently successfully negotiated a $1 a year lease on a city-owned building with SMA Behavioral so they could open Platteville County's first drop-in center for citizens who suffer from any type of mental illness, so they can receive no charge help but things like support services, housing, food, and job skills. Communities around Palatka have had one or more of this type of facility for some time, but this is your first, so congratulations. Palatka has completed or is in the process of completing phases one through four of a potable water line replacement projects. Representatives from the city have just returned from Tallahassee, where you secured a sponsor for three infrastructure bills to be introduced during the 2019 legislative session, one of which requests $1.5 million to help you complete phases five through seven of the potable water line replacement project. Funding for phases one and four are being completed with creative use of different funding sources, which we often have to do to try to get stuff done in states, between water management districts, CDPG grants, state revolving fund loans, and TIP funds. The city adopted a budget in 1819 which brought all non-public safety positions up to a base rate of $11 an hour and up to $14 now for positions that require a CDL license. In an economy like ours where it's hard to find good workers because they're going all over the place, it's very important. You guys also successfully negotiated an interlocal agreement with Platteville County to move all city building permitting activities to Platteville County Building Department and another agreement to take over all fire inspections. If Platteville County Building Department blocks, it performs the inspections and receives the fees. As I just learned, you're prior city managers, county manager. I think that makes it a lot easier today.
Sometimes.
Yeah.[396.11][396.11](laughing) I'm not going. In 2015, Palatka successfully adopted fire fees for all properties inside the city limits, was able to reduce its billage rate from 9.1749 to 6.4. It's quite an achievement. In spite of having nearly 46% of its properties off the tax rolls, which is not common throughout this state of Florida, and having to reduce its staff by more than a third since 2008, Palatka continues to improve infrastructure and parks and create recreation opportunities and meet service expectations of its citizens through wide stewardships of taxpayer funds, grants, low-interest loans, bonds, and other innovative means. In 2009, Harrisburg found that only 5% of citizens could describe the specific role of local government, and before graduate school I would have been one of them. Government leadership in shaping their communities. In 2015, FCCMA took a leadership role in that effort to raise awareness about the value of professional administrators in local government. We're going to play a quick video developed by both the International City County Management Association and the State Association to share the message of what life well-run means for our towns, cities, and counties.
Lights.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you. So, we encourage you to support your professional manager and stay informed by visiting our website at FCCMA.org, subscribing to our newsletter, and following us on Facebook. And I just want to, again, another congratulations on your milestone achievement. I think the commission manager form of government started in Texas after a very bad hurricane a little before 1900 or right after 1900. And you followed as a progressive organization, not too far behind that. So, congratulations. I'd like to invite down Mayor Terry Hill, Carol Hill, Vice Mayor Mary Lockson Brown, Commissioner Justin Campbell, Commissioner Ruthan Forum, Commissioner Tammy Williams, and Intermanager Betsy Dugers, and provide them with a certificate from the International City County Management Association, the Florida City County Management Association, marking 2019 as the 95th year that Palatka has been operating under the commission manager form of government. Congratulations.
(applause)
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor in the middle. Thank you again, Mr. Rosen. Soon as the month of January is canceled until February.
(laughing)
Not happening, isn't it?
Joining me this month is Commissioner Forum. First and foremost, we want to thank our educators who are surrounding the room right now. If you just raise your hands for the work that you do with our young people. And let's give them a round of applause. (applause) This is going pretty quickly tonight because my voice is going fast. We also want all our family members who are here, joining these young folks as well as extended family members, neighbors, friends, would you please stand at this time so we can recognize you? Because it truly takes a village to raise a child. (applause) And now to the moment that we've all been waiting for. It's our opportunity to recognize our youth. We would ask for our representatives from our schools to come forward, as we call the names of the kids as well, at which time we will gather in the front of the room. Commissioner Forum, I want to say, when you come forward, you'll be greeted by Commissioner Forum, we'll give you your award, we'll assemble around the front of the room, then we'll take a recess so that we can take photographs of the students for the newspaper and as well as take photographs for all your family to commemorate the activities today. And so, Dr. Futter, if you would continue on. From CLO, 6th Grade Center, Noah Paul Perdue. (applause) I am guaranteed to mess up with each two names every time we do this. First on my list is Latham Ayako, Children's Reading Center Charter Scope. From H Miller School, Jacob Jones. From James Day Long Elementary, James Slade. From Kelly Smith Elementary, Chloe Sullivan. From Mellon Elementary, congratulations. Jayla Hudson. From Penal again, Lexi White. And we will complete your paperwork tomorrow for your transfer. Congratulations. From Public Academy of Arts and Sciences, Josie Atkins. Did I miss any students? So, again, we'd like to thank each and every one of you and congratulate you for a job well done. We recognize you for all that you're doing within your school, for your citizenship. And I'll leave you with something that I've been saying since I was in the 3rd grade. And it simply says, "I am somebody. If my mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it, I know I can achieve it because I am somebody." I learned that in the 3rd grade with this Greens class. We said it every day. And it stayed with me until this day, I'm 46 years old. And it simply tells us that we can do anything that we want to do. You guys are destined for greatness. You are stewards of this community, and we are so very proud of you. Keep up the good work. Let's give them another round of applause. At this time, we're going to ask the students to remain. We would make two lines for our picture for the newspaper, and we'll take a recess with everyone. Can you reach over? We'll take a recess.
I hope they do, sometimes they keep trying to back. I hope they don't nobody care.
Every time they're loud, they just love you, Tim.
Yeah. I love him too. I never would have thought I would put him in the bathroom.
I got two students that we want to make sure we recognize as well. First up, this is James Slade from James Day Long Elementary School. Actually, Tony Slade from James Day Long Elementary School. So, Tony Slade from James Day Long Elementary School, we want to make sure we recognize him. Congratulations. And also Jayla Hudson from Mellon Elementary, we want to make sure we recognize. So, again, we want to make sure, we will make sure that we commemorate this moment. You guys give a nice Dr. Chappell smile at this time. We want to commemorate this moment again to the parents. We don't think, we think it's important that we continually recognize and honor the young people for the things that they do. And you guys kind of missed it, but I'll tell you, again, we always tell our kids when I assess his 3rd grade, he says, "I am somebody. My mind can't conceive it and my heart can't believe it. I know I can achieve it." So, guys, remember that you're somebody special, and you're somebody destined for greatness. And again, congratulations, keep up the good work.
Great, thank you.
So, Tony, we're going to have, we're going to get, they're going to give you another certificate. She's going to bring that out to you right quick. But as we move forward in our agenda, we'll move to item two on the agenda, which is public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes. No action will be taken on topics of discussion. I see we have a couple of speakers cards that are filled out at this time. And so, I've got Mr. Sam Carr.
Hello, Mayor Fishers. I'm Sam Carr, One Way Riverside Drive, San Sula. I'm also the Chairman of the March of Trail Committee, and it is indeed my pleasure to return the $9,000 that y'all loaned us. So, we appreciate it. And it worked out really well for us. You know, we had, we educated 1,000 2nd graders. That's, that's really amazing and all. And so, we had another meeting with the March of Trail Committee, and they said, I said, "No, my dead body wouldn't do this again." So, they said, "That's fine." So, we'll be back next year and make this an annual event for the city of Palatka. Yeah, thank you so much for your assistance and understanding. The tourist development council money afforded us this, and we were able to actually do the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. So great.
Hey, one of the partners we've done this two years in a row.
That's right.
And I'm going to hand it to the Finance Director.
All right. Bartram is a shining example of what a community partner is, to bring that festival to the place that it is in such a short period of time, the level of commitment that you have to the community, and the amount of publicity that comes out of it, as well as the ancillary benefits as well. But also the fact that you guys continually do this and you're subsufficient, it just shows a lot of commitment and a lot of hard work. And we thank the committee for all that you do in this community and all the partners who participate in the March of the Festival. So, again, thank you very much for what you guys do. Next up, Trail Town Committee, Robbie Correa and members. Everybody come together. Group right there. This is the group reference.
Robbie Correa, 18 Dodge, on the, I guess, by default, chairman of the Trail Town.
You guys come out front and stand out front.
We are so excited that this day, we didn't intend the review of our application and the presentation, and we are officially, hey, Palatka is officially the Trail Town as designated by the state of Palatka.
So, guys, you have to come down and join us. Rudolph Jones.
We started this back in August when we had a meeting with CRA to talk about the importance of the economic benefit of becoming a trail town and so forth. The committee worked really hard to get all the dots pointed and all the S and all that kind of stuff crossed. So, it was a great effort, team effort, and the city and all. And so, it's Palatka is the trail town. So, please understand.
And it will be an economic driver, and also DPI was involved with it. So, it's another partnership with several organizations as well as the state.
One, two, three. All right, cool. Congratulations. And so, to the committee on behalf of this commission and the citizens of this community, we are terribly grateful for the work that you guys have put into place for Black and Become a Trail Town. We are excited about what the future brings, but it's just the vision, the commitment, and the love for this community, and those who were born here and those who have made this home. We thank you, and there's no way that we can ever repay you for your efforts. You guys go over beyond the call of duty. You are truly visionary, and you guys are servant leaders, and we definitely appreciate all that you do. (applause) Sam, Nick can get another loan too because you got 1,000 credit score. Perfect.
We will, probably, be having a ceremony on April 5th. It's when everybody, the whole trail community is going to be here in Palatka. And so, maybe we can do a ceremony on the rear front to mount this on. Okay?
Mound it on the new clock tower.
Moving on to item number three of the agenda, our consent agenda. We have items A through F on the agenda for tonight. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the consent agenda? There's a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close motion carries unanimously. I see Mr. Suggs and Mr. Manning in the back of the room. We always like to welcome you guys in. Thank you again, Mr. Suggs, for your participation in the invocation today. And also, Mr. Manning, thank you for the work that you do for this county as well. So, again, gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. Moving on, item four, housing authority appointment. And so, if you got the call, a few months ago, we discussed the housing authority appointment for the seat that was held by Ms. Brenda Bibbels, who sedated that seat. She's no longer with the community. We extended that seat until such time as they appointed the Detective Director. That time has come. Mr. James Nasher Woods was the sole applicant for that position. My recommendation is that we accept his application and move forward with the appointment.
Is he here?
He's not here. I actually spoke with him earlier today as well, and he's coming for the commission to speak.
Yes.
Is there, is there motion on the floor? Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda. Item five of the agenda is, we're in our public area, it's an ordinance for 320 St. Johns, 320 Stillwell Avenue, Platteville. We always like to welcome you guys in. Thank you again, Mr. Suggs, uh, for your participation and vacation today. And also, Mr. Manning, thank you for the work that you do for this county as well. So again, gentlemen, thank you very much for being here. Moving on, item four, housing authority appointment. And so, if you got the call, a few months ago, we discussed the housing authority appointment for the seat that was held by Ms. Brenda Bibbels. We suspended that seat, she's no longer with the community. We extended, um, that seat until such time as they appointed the detective director. That time has come. Mr. James Nasher Woods was the sole applicant for that position. My recommendation is that we accept his application and move forward with the appointment.
Second.
He's not here, I actually spoke with him earlier today as well. And he's coming for the commission and spoken.
Yes.
Is there, is there a motion on the floor, is there a second, is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item five of the agenda. Item five of the agenda is, is our, we're in our public hearing, it's an ordinance. For 320 St. John's, 320 Stillwell Avenue, plan for a recommendation to amend the future land use map. An element for 320 Stillwell Avenue from Putnam County COM Commercial to City Commercial, COM to adopt. These are all housekeeping matters, items five through 10. So the amendments five through nine are all ones that we've heard before. Also, we're, we're gonna read them.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From Putnam County US Urban Service to RL Residential Low Density for 320 Stillwell Avenue, located in section two, township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per se verability and providing an effective date.
Second. Can we read the caption one more time?
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From Putnam County US Urban Service to RL Residential Low Density for 320 Stillwell Avenue, located in section two, township 10 South, range 26 East, providing per se verability and providing an effective date.
So move.
It is urban service to, um,
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, it's different here.
Yeah, it is different.
I apologize. Um, so urban, I mean, I'll read it again. An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From Putnam County US Urban Service to, five is to RL Residential.
That is correct. It's correct on the caption. It's not correct on the agenda. And it was also advertised correctly.
And that's what I want to make sure. Um, Mr. Don, it was that.
If it was in fact advertised correctly.
Yes.
The advertising was correct. Then the agenda, the, the difference being the agenda shows it going from Putnam County, Putnam County Commercial to City Commercial, and in fact, it's going from Putnam County Urban Service to residential low density. Cause I'm reading the caption correct.
Yes.
So if it was advertised correctly, then I don't have a problem with the discrepancy between the agenda and the actual caption.
So we verify on that, we got them?
Is the body of the ordinance correct? See the captions correct?
Yes.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number six. 300 North State Road 19, plan for a recommendation to amend future land use map. An element from Putnam County US Urban Services to City Commercial for adoption.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. 300 North State Road 19, from Putnam County US Urban Services to COM Commercial, located in section 02, township 10 South, range 26 East, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second, for commission of forum. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven of the agenda. 2704 and 2706 Reed Street, planning board recommendation to amend the future land use map. An element from Putnam County Commercial to City Commercial for adoption.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From Putnam County COM Commercial to COM Commercial for 2704 and 2706 Reed Street. Property located in section one, township 10 South, range 26 East, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight of the agenda. 3829 Reed Street, planning board recommendation to amend future land use map. An element from Putnam County Urban Services to City of Palatka Commercial for adoption.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From Putnam County US Urban Services to COM Commercial for 3829 Reed Street. Property located in the section two, township 10 South, range 26 East, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We'll now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine. Ordinants, 623 and 625 Laurel Street, planning board recommendation to amend future land use map. An element from RH Residential High Density to Commercial.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than 10 acres in size. From RH Residential High Density to COM Commercial for 623 and 625 Laurel Street. Property located in section 42, township 10 South, range 27 East, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item 10, an ordinance amending Appendix A fee schedule to add fire inspection fees for community.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, amending Appendix A fee schedule of the municipal code of the city of Palatka as it pertains to fees and other charges relating to fire prevention and protection. Providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Second. There's a motion on the floor in a second. For public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lattman. Excuse me. Aye. Oh, man. I'm gonna make it. That won't help. Moving on, discussion item. Blue Crab Festival, set a workshop date. So to those of you, uh, the reason we put this on the agenda is I had a conversation with Buddy Thompson of Blue Crabbing. And Mr. Thompson indicated earlier in the year, he actually spoke to Mr. Diggers back in October or somewhere around that time.
It was in December.
About the fact that the Blue, this Blue Crab Festival would be going forward at that time. Because we haven't heard, we didn't hear from him subsequently. Uh, I put a call in to him to see, uh, was he in fact gonna move forward with Blue Crab, as he indicated previously. And he indicated that he was not, and that his intentions were to come forward in 2020. I, I, I think that, you know, the time has passed us by, um, as it relates to where we are. Mr. Thompson has indicated a willingness to collaborate with other organizations. There was a significant interest in the past from community partners as it related to Blue Crab. Uh, Blue Crab has traditionally been the largest festival in Putnam County. And there've been some challenges over the years as it relates to the festival. But what I wanted to do this year, I, I think we're at a point where it's critical for us to have something in Memorial Day Weekend this year. And I wanted to do a quick workshop at the beginning of February for all interested parties who are willing to come together and collaborate. Uh, we've heard from Rotary, we've heard from, um, organizations, most of our civic organizations have expressed some interest. Palatka Young Professionals, um, they've also expressed significant interest in actually, um, putting together something for Memorial Day Weekend. And they've actually filled out a special events department, uh, for that weekend. But I think there's an opportunity for, for us to come together in the spirit of what Blue Crab started out as, with the J.C.'s, uh, which was a community event, uh, which brings people together. It brings our local merchants together with our local community. And it expands out into, um, to inviting others into the community so that they can truly get an opportunity to share the beauty of what we have here. Several of the vendors from Blue Crab are interested in coming forward, uh, and participating, including the carnival. And some of the other, um, major entities that were part of that festival. We know Mr. Thompson has historically been the person who did the concerts and the sound. I don't think he's opposed to participate in some capacity there. But I think times are of the essence, and there's an opportunity for us to move forward quickly. Traditionally, this, you know, three and a half months is enough time to put together a festival of this magnitude. But it is enough time for us to put together a pretty significant, um, community program. And I think that's something that we can all look at. And so, um, with the blessing of the commission, we'd like to try to schedule a workshop and really a roundtable, um, for the community to come out, the interested organizations. And we can reach out and solicit as many community partners as we want to come forward with a plan that works. And I think the city has to have some skin in this game. You know, we've got to, uh, you know, there's a lot that goes for goodwill. We know traditionally, there's a, the fee schedule that goes out for, um, these class A events. And, but there's an opportunity for us to, uh, to really join forces and make, you know, and create our own marquee event internally. And so, the discussion is for us to talk about what our position is and where we are. And the last year, we weren't ready, you know, the sentiment of the commission is that we were not ready for it. And that we found ourselves scrambling. And so, this year, I think, um, there's been a lot of consideration over the past year considering the question marks surrounding whether Blue Crab would go all through Blue Crab Week or not. And so the question is, what do we, how, how do you guys want to move forward with this stuff?
I think it's important. I, not to beat around the bush or restate the truth, but I think it's, it's our time to shine. And I said it last year in different forms, that we, the community here in Palatka, we can put something together. That's Palatka bread and Putnam County bread with the citizens of our great city and county. So I think we need to do what we need to do in order to make it happen. Everything you said, I, kudos and back, I retweeted, I shared and do everything. It's time for us to take a step forward to make sure that we have something for our citizens, not only for our citizens, but those who already have on their calendar that something is going on in Palatka Memorial Day Weekend. Believe it or not, you have a lot of people that block off that weekend to say, "I'm going to Palatka." And we want to make sure that this year, we have something for them to come to Palatka for.
Commission.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just in full agreement with everything that's been said. I don't think I should be depending on one individual to hold the city, I would say, hostage. And, and in this manner, I think last year was a, a major bust. We thought we were gonna have it, didn't have it. This year, I think we need to move forward with that and whatever resources we need to do to provide that. I'm sure that.
Well, if we don't do it, it's gonna go away and we'll lose.
We will do something.
And I'm on board for us moving forward. By no means it won't be as great as the Blue Crab, but at least we're showing efforts.
It might be better.
Putting something together.
It might be greater.
Maybe, and, but we can show efforts that we're getting there, we're doing something for the citizens and the community.
I think it shows just the camaraderie that we have here in our community. Just the past weekend with us having just Martin Luther King, that people spoke highly of it. So just imagine if we have all of people in Palatka that has a buy-in to make sure that this thing is a success. Because I'm quite sure the young professionals, Downtown Inc. or the commission or whoever take the parts in this wanted to fail. So I'm quite sure we're gonna all make sure that we put in our best to make sure that this is, that this is a success.
We had Rotary, I mean, they talked to the mayor last year. I mean, but with all of the different organizations that reached out that were willing to participate and help make this thing a success. So I think we got enough energy and, uh, I think we can make it happen.
And I do think we need to just move as quickly as possible with that workshop date, so we can go ahead. Cause we're already three and a half months.
Cause it's next week, I mean, we need to really move forward.
Yes.
First is next week.
And I think there are a couple of things. First and foremost, Palatka Young Professionals has kind of stepped up. We need to consider where we are from a future standpoint. If it's gonna be a city, a city-backed festival, do we need to put anarchy or something to that effect? To find promoters or someone or an organization that wants to run this event for the city? If it's a partnership, all those different things come into play. And also where we are funding-wise, so those are all considerations to, for us to have in place as we begin to schedule this. Because time is so critical in this, um, my suggestion is that we get it scheduled, you know, within the next 10 days. So that, because every moment is precious as it relates to advertising, as it relates to planning and moving forward. Because if vendors don't know what you're doing, they're gonna go somewhere else for that weekend. We want to make sure we invite the civic organizations, that we put the information on in as many areas as we can. Churches, private citizens with specific knowledge and have it open to the public in a form where we can get our partners in, the chamber, et cetera. Because, uh, there's an opportunity, I want to make sure I recognize. Danny Jones, Ryan Burden, Chamberlain Titor, you guys can just stand for us. We want to thank you for helping you guys do it. I know how too many times you don't get the thank yous, but today we'll give you the thank you because we think you guys are doing a great job. And, um, we, we want our community partners to, to work with us so that we can continue to grow the community as well.
Thank you. I actually attended the very first Blue Crab Festival and, and used boat sale. Ms. Marshall Lane was one of the organizers of that very first.
Uh-oh.
And I think it's great that Palatka Young Professionals wants to step up because it takes youth and it takes energy and it takes a lot of vitality and planning to pull this off. Which, Blue Crab Festival started off as an all-volunteer event. It carried on as an all-volunteer event. I think the first one was two days. And it kind of ran back and forth from a couple of food vendors at the riverfront to steamboats. It was kind of the venue and there was just used boats all up and down St. John's Avenue with for sale signs on them. And it was a way to kind of attract. And it, within three years, it was a carnival and, uh, the, you know, the big tent and the entertainment. And so it, it grew quickly. And, uh, through the efforts of a lot of people in the community.
So I think that historic overview is important. Do you have something as well?
I don't know if we should give her the floor, she may be backing out of something. We already have committed.
Marshall Lane, 210 East Forest Park Drive. Let me just clarify, I wasn't on the first thing. But it's thanks to Ann Grabtree, who was president of the Downtown Palatka Merchants at the time. And it was then the Hod Brothers who came up with the base, and some friends came up with the basic concept. It has worked, but I have to tell you, it is a year-long planning event. It is very complicated. You need people on it to, um, who understand all that. You are too late almost, I would bet, for most vendors, they've already committed. You can organize something, but it will not be the, you know, what we came to know. It has been a volunteer event, as you say. And it is the people of Palatka who make this happen. And as, Ann and Tommy Grabtree were really, I bet the first six years, they hated the festival. And their friend, and then they got friends involved. And then we have, it has been great for Palatka, I would love to see it come back. But please understand, you need people involved who knew, who were on it and know how it works. There's some Marshall Puljam, uh, George Loach, CJ, all those kind of people, so.
Thank you, appreciate it. And so again, one of the things, I mean, kind of the same conversation from last year for me. This event is a placeholder, it's not Blue Crab. But it's a placeholder and it's something that can be done on a community effort. You know, last year, we were talking about the Bass and Blue Crab Bash. But it's an opportunity for us to put something in place for our citizens that leads to greater things in the future. And, um, if we plan it properly, if we put it out there and we look at the proposals and come up with the ideas, then I think it works better. But I, I, I think that having nothing is not an option this year. And we've got to, you know, we've got to explore our possibilities. And we've got to, you know, we've got to explore our possibilities in all phases. Yes, sir.
I know you said within the next 10 days, put us at January, I mean, February the 3rd in order to have this, which is a Sunday.
He said within the next 10.
Yes. So for us, I would say, just to clear it, that we mark off the 4th of February to have it, which is a Monday, which gives us ample enough time to advertise it within the community and get people that time. So it's not in the 10-day frame, it's the 11th day. But I think that'll be the best way to make sure that we get the word out to more than, the more people. So that would be my recommendation in regards to the workshop. If that date does not work, I would say the 31st, which is next Thursday, that gives us a week, not even a week, to get the word out. So those will be my two close dates with February 4th being my first recommendation.
I say Thursday, Friday, Monday, like, I mean, one of those days would be.
The 4th.
And the 4th would be.
On the 31st.
Can we do the 4th, but can we do it in the evening so that, so that people will work on it also?
Absolutely.
It just won't be a good date for me for us. I have a very important engagement, well, maybe that I have to be, and I don't think I'll be available that evening.
Can we do it on the 1st?
You want to try it?
The 5th would be fine.
That's a Thursday night.
No, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, I'm sorry, the Tuesday.
What about the 3rd?
February 5th works.
Okay.
Okay.
5th?
February 5th, 5:30.
Yeah.
Yes.
February 5th, 5:30. Very well. Update on city manager selection process.
Good evening.
Good evening.
General Robinson, the resources, the briefly selection process. We're in the narrowing process now, but the resource director from Trail Spring, we're getting that to the manageable stack that Mr. Martinez has asked for. There, who will give him the stack to review, the capacity that he wants to review them in. Once he reviews them, then we'll be able to get with council and get you your first round of candidates for selection.
When you get the chance, can you reach out to Mr. Martinez? He kind of, I talked to him a little briefly, so just kind of let him know. And by the way, those are my glasses.
Thank you.
Do we, I mean, are we looking at, we have an order, are we looking at a timeframe?
The next 10 days. Within the next 10 days. 10 days.
So for 10 days, that's when we're going to get, so by February 4th?
About workshop.
Yeah. That's a good, perfect time.
So that 13 days.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Big life when we're wearing Ms. Triggers' down. She's, she's trek to Tallahassee and she's wearing multiple hats.
Ms. Triggers is having a good time. Ms. Triggers is getting into her, you know. I'm getting into the. Yeah, I've got some multiple hats on, but there's replacements out there.
Yeah.
Moving forward, anything else, Ms. Robinson? You take it, there isn't. Thank you very much.
Do we have any job openings outside of the city, outside of the city manager?
City GM, driver presentation, that's the end.
Situation positions available, Chief Shaw, you got anything for us today?
Yes, sir, I do, thank you very much. John U is not here, so I'm going to take a page out of his book and bring my nice flyer. I'm proud to announce that we will be having our second annual Chief's Gala. It will be held Saturday, February 23rd. For those who don't have much history of the gala, the gala is basically a fundraiser put together to be able to support our City of Palacka Police Athletically Program. It's all, all funding raised at the gala goes to the kids, so we'll be able to have programs throughout the year. This year, we at Price-Martinson, again, it'll be on the 23rd of February. The seats per person is $40 per person, it's a formal black tie event. We are looking to have a wonderful time. Being that I am the host this year, I have pledged, and I'm hoping several people to match me, but I have pledged $1,000 to the event. So I've taken the lead and we're going out for different sponsors, but I've taken the lead to step in, to try to do as much as I can for the kids, and I'm very excited about this upcoming gala.
How much is a table?
A table? It's 300.
300?
Okay. Commissioner Campbell, it is 300.
Thank you, Chief, anything else?
What time is, what does it start?
It starts at 6:00 P.M. 6:00 P.M. is networking, dinner starts at 7:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. And we will have dancing. Commissioner Campbell has nominated to be the first dancer.
I want to be on the dance.
My speech will be held down to two and a half minutes, or I'm sorry. I want to ask for two and a half minutes of your time.
You hear him.
Bring the bell there, bring the bell.
Two and a half minutes.
His timer's up already.
Two minutes and 21 seconds.
Chief Grant.
I'll be quick. We have the routine report for you on the first quarter financials. As I said, it's routine. Couple of things that I'll point out is that you will notice that some of the expenses are based on, or have skewed percentages, meaning that we have some encumbrance a year, they are included in the expenses. So if you see an encum, or if you see a percentage that's a little bit higher on some of the lines, it may mean that there's an encumbrance in there for a large project that we might not have received the funding as far as grant or loan proceeds for. So other than that, it is a routine report and I finished right now.
You have a way to color code that maybe until we can understand the encumbrance.
Well, you were speaking earlier in a language I didn't understand, so. Maybe we'll work something else.
Ms. Tucker. Holmes.
Don't steal your thunder on the Tallahassee trip.
You got it, go ahead.
We went to Tallahassee, the mayor, myself and Ms. Tucker and Mr. Griffith, who is not here because we wore him out, went to Tallahassee. We spent Tuesday and Wednesday going from one legislative office to the next. We met with staff, we met with senators, we met with representatives. They're going to sponsor, we have a sponsor to sponsor, one on the senate side and one on the House of Representatives sides for three infrastructure bills. One is for St. John's Avenue, another one is for the wastewater treatment plan, and the other one is for the potable water lines. You all received information that we presented to the legislative delegation last week on two of those projects. You haven't seen the information on the St. John's Avenue project. The mayor can talk to, can talk to you about that. And, but we, it was, it was very encouraging. All the feedback that we've received was very encouraging. And so everybody did a great job and we wore ourselves out. And Ms. Floyd, just keeping up with everybody was a great.
Ms. Tucker, just give them an overview of the toll streets property for 50 minutes.
Basically, the St. John's Avenue provision request is a complete streets initiative. Basically, taking care of the infrastructure under the street and then milling and resurfacing from 5th to 13th, creating new ADA sidewalks, new eight-foot wide sidewalks, making sure that all of the intersections have traffic calming safety measures, brick enclosures, opening up the downtown to the residents of that area and making it easier for them to access the things there like the fire department, the police department, the post office, as well as the downtown merchants and trying to get a traffic flow going from the riverfront through the corridor.
It's going to be traffic friendly and walking.
Yes, and share those devices.
1.5 million dollar appropriations request with the 1.3 million dollar match.
We got very positive with you.
Commissioner Campbell.
I must admit that I'm a little jealous about the Tallahassee trip anytime.
Me too. I mean, wow.
Just want to make mention that Palacka, Putnam County has lost one of our leaders, Crescent City Commissioner Marcus Harvey, I mean Hardy. Just uprising political guru with a passion for Putnam County, Crescent City, unfortunately passed away. And just to the citizens of this great city and county, visitation for Commissioner Hardy is Friday, February the 1st, from 5:00 to 8:00 at Mount Table First Baptist Church, 608 Randolph Street in Crescent City. And the funeral services will be Saturday, the 2nd, at 2:00 P.M. at Miller and Amidiat. Definitely send condolences, prayers to the family. Like I said, anytime you saw him walking around the Florida League of Cities Convention, he was about business. He was about making sure that Crescent City, Putnam County was the topic of conversation outside of us trying to beat him by Palacka. But he definitely, definitely had a passion for, for his community, for this great county. So we take the loss, he was a dear friend to this commission. It hit me really hard, and it's something that I'm dealing with. I had the opportunity to talk to him last week, and he just sounded like himself. But God makes no mistake, so we just lean and depend on God at this difficult time. Aside of that, for the citizens of this community, on behalf of the African-American Cultural Arts, thank you, the Martin Luther King Breakfast and Festival was a major success. Over 200 people came in on Saturday at the Ravine Gardens. Dynamic turnout, the festival, we probably had the most vendors this year than we've had in the past. So each year, we look to make sure that we continue to make this legacy live here in the great city of Palacka and Putnam County. So thanks to everyone that patronized and shared in that event.
Vice Mayor.
I let Rufus sell the survive for lunch and we went to yesterday with the house in Palacka. But I just want to remind you all about the airshow, 26th of January.
It's a Saturday.
Yep, it's at 8:00, in this Palacka. Starts at 4:00, right?
10:00 A.M.
4 o'clock, everybody's flying.
That's okay, get them all up.
I can get them out there next week, have a night show.
There you go.
Commissioner McCaskill.
I just want, I had the opportunity also to participate in some of the Martin Luther King liaisons. And the parade was one, and it was good to see many faces out in the audience that was there. Also, the breakfast, it was, it was nice to be able to attend a portion of that. I want to apologize for my absence, I've been, I was looking forward to the fly-in on Saturday. Unfortunately, I will be facilitating the LPA Teacher Leaders Program and that will be from 9:00 to 4:00. So I want you all to have, enjoy it for me and I will miss you guys, and that's it.
Ms. Ward.
All right, well, we, Palacka, the commission received the Good Neighbor Award. On Wednesday, we went to Palacka Housing Authority and they just presented us with an extraordinary contribution award along with some of the other people who came, agencies that came or what have you. So I have that here with me and I think Ms. Vice Mayor also have another one at home that she's claimed that she's going to have to bring in, but we have two. And I think that was supposed to go to the mayor, was it for the mayor?
For the city, they just said it was for the city. I brought it to the left, right?
All right, but yeah, but we had one for the commission and one for the city of Palacka. So we did receive those and we had an awesome turnout. And I look forward to continuing that partnership, helping with the housing authority, achieve their goals and mission for this community. With that being said, that's all I have.
And just in closing, I guess the last year has been really trying for this commission as hope from a personal perspective. You know, I think the loss of Marcus Hardy, who in many ways, we always joke with him about being Commissioner Six for Palacka, what he's been with us since 2015. He's grown within the Florida League of Cities and P.C. Leo. And to some of the tragedies that we've all faced and the circumstances, it's always good to know that, you know, people within this community are thinking about you and praying for you. Because a lot of times, this is a thankless job in most circumstances. Volunteerism is the same way. And, you know, I'm just thankful for this community. I saw citizens come up and talk to Commissioner McCaskill. And, you know, I've seen them approach Ms. Bryant and other commissioners as they've gone through things and our staff. I'm really thankful for our commission, for our citizens and for our staff. And just the growth and the way that this community is galvanizing itself. We will have our flags fly at half-mast for the remainder of the week for Commissioner Hardy. But we will continually move this community forward. It will be moved forward. We're excited about what the future brings. We started knocking on doors early at Tallahassee. And at first, they were like, why are you here? And then they're like, we're glad you're here. And so we're just going to continue to be aggressive from Tallahassee to D.C. to Palacka as we begin to walk those halls, people recognizing those faces because they're continually coming back. And we're hoping that this is the year that we get some additional assistance from the state. That we've taken our resources as far as they can go without that additional assistance to turn the corner. But there are some critical things that are in place for us in Palacka in order to change that ancient infrastructure that's 130 years old. And I want us to all be mindful as we move forward into this legislative season, that those things are real. Also, the city of Palacka, we need to, we need to adopt policies here to assist those who get affected by the government shutdowns. Because while we think that we aren't affected by that, we are, when you look at Lee Connolly, when you look at some of the other service providers and the way that the funding comes into place, it's critical. And so we've got, we've got government contract workers, or we've got government employees who work from Palacka for other agencies who've been affected because they are critical. They are a critical staff that's continuing to get paid. And we have to make sure that we do everything on our side. I mean, Ms. Triggers has done an excellent job using discretion to make sure that we accommodate those who've been affected. But if necessary, this commission has to be willing to put in emergency policies which allow for extensions of grace periods relates to utilities and things of that nature so that we can accommodate those who have been affected in our capacities. You know, Lee Connolly House, for one, is a, is an organization within this community that serves us greatly, that they're struggling, as a result, they're finally not coming in the way it normally does. And so continually be mindful and fearful that things will change and go back to some civiles normal in the future. And that's where we are. So I'll understand emotion at this time.